I'd like to call in order for July 24, 2024. Stop on the fly.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're gonna start the meeting there by, uh, you got public here. Iron Tails, liquor license renewal. Uh, we'll start that, open this meeting up at 6:07.
Alright, so we did receive a completed application from Iron Tails, uh, in addition to the required fee. I received, um, after notice, notification in the property and around town, we received no emails from the public with no concerns. Uh, the fire chief did send an email indicating that he went there, met with Greg, everything checked out fine, that he had no concerns. Also, uh, received an email from the code enforcement officer saying that the land use department has no issues or concerns, no open permits or violations on the property. Um, and I'm giving you all, uh, the shared department log for the last year.
I have no questions.
Greg, come up and say something nice.
What do you want me to do?
You don't have to, but you know, you can all say something nice, so.
You don't see it all?
See?
I appreciate the continued support from the community. Um, got a big weekend coming up. I think it's gonna be a, a traffic issue this weekend, to be quite honest with you, between across the street and what we've got going on, but we're gonna do our best. I've got my team of parking attendants to squeeze as many onto the property as we can in an orderly fashion as far as the liquor license goes. Kind of put in a new policy and, uh, since I did that, I have lost a few customers, but it has been effective. And where, uh, if somebody is, if a patron is offered a ride home by a staff member or a friend and they refuse, they no longer, they can't come back in. And that policy has been pretty effective.
Excellent.
So.
It might be less, I mean, no?
Yeah, yeah, it's, uh, I came up with it, uh, over an incident that I had and, uh, you know, on two different occasions when people refused and they enjoyed well, I, I did call the police, uh, because they're definitely a danger themselves in the community and so people want that. I don't need to fall on me, so.
Great.
Thank you.
Make a motion to approve.
Oh, so it's on new business?
Oh, excuse me. Alright.
Over here.
Motion to. Oh, yeah.
Just try to move it along.
Okay, so you guys have no more questions, no more concerns? Okay, then we're gonna close down the public here at 6:00 now. Okay, Warren Mills?
Yep.
All signed.
All signed. Approval of the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda for July 24, 2024.
Second amendment.
All in favor? Minutes of the last meeting?
I'll make a motion, we approve the minutes of the last meeting.
You got a second?
Second.
All in favor? Title of the straight-up weekly update?
Um, just a couple of things for you, let you know that we did schedule, um, Boll and Palmer to come to your August 7th meeting. That's the company that did the study for, um, Lebanon, the road study, study that, um, Tom had mentioned. Uh, Charlie, invite the roof committee to come and sit through it, just to hear what they have to offer.
Yeah, I, I have no issue with that. It'd probably be, uh, best to do that, keep them, have them involved. We don't wanna turn this into anything huge or something, but they do.
And they wanted to know really what you wanted to hear. I said we just wanted to kind of talk about what they had to offer, kind of touch on the Lebanon before they had done and just a conversation. Um, David, I think I told you, but Charlie did reach out after you met with him, um, the parking lot last week from Allstate. Yeah, and he said that he should have the bid by the end of the week, so it should be on next week's agenda.
Front of.
Front of.
Yeah, so what we do is we, uh, Charlie, you were there?
Yep.
Dan, you weren't, right? You weren't there last week. So, uh, seeing the bullet's gone there and we have some issues out there with the, uh, helping the most big one spot up there. So while the individual that got a paving bid was here, uh, we were able to go out afterwards and we kind of get, we're trying to get an idea of what's it cost to pave it in, take the hump out, get it so we can, uh, uh, make that look a little bit more presentable.
Yeah.
And of course, Tom's got some other ideas that, you know, about doing some work on there also, but, you know, we'll talk about that in the future.
Yeah.
But he's supposed to be giving us some prices. He's gonna give us a price on one, just patch it in the area there that, where the building was and that where we gotta take the, we gotta take the hump out because right now it's kind of, kind of dangerous.
Yeah, he was talking about.
Mill and, uh, right in the, or kind of whatever. So he's gonna give us a price on the area where the building was and that hump and a price on paving everything from the line area down. So, uh, so we'll see what those numbers look like and see what we want to do.
I thought part of an early discussion that we had was we didn't want to do too much down there because we were gonna wait to see if we're gonna do any future plans, but we didn't have to do the work twice.
And we, and we did and, uh, and we're, we're, we're still gonna park this, so we're just gonna see some numbers. But the problem we're gonna have is if we don't at least pave in the area where they attempted to build it down and take that hump out, uh.
Paving, I mean, plowing.
Plow, the plowing, uh, even if we were to put a building up or something, you, you, the process is gonna take so long to do it, it's gonna be wide open for a long time. So, uh, but we, we can discuss that, we get the numbers, we'll see what happens.
Uh, the only other thing is, um, the, so the clerk's office is gonna get audited by motor vehicles on August 13th, um, believe it or not, it's something I look forward to. And we strive to, um, keep our inventory and procedures and policies intact. They normally go to most towns every three to five years depending on needs, so they'll be coming to join us on the 13th. And last is just to let the select board know, um, that I did meet with two different alarm companies based on our conversation last week. I met with American Security and met with Cpost Security. Representative from each company come in and, um, working on proposals, but both of them, um, feel like they can take over the current system, just overtake monitoring, very little costs, uh, both of their fees sound like they're a lot lower than what we're paying for really the same service and local, um, support, so we'll get that in writing and, um, present it to you hopefully next week.
Good.
That's all I have.
Okay, the ease all up, the talk, okay. Warren Finance Committee still is not meeting, of course there are no warrants to review, but I expect sometime they'll get themselves, uh, moving forward. APAT, we still have an open position there, Wednesday?
Next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday, great, so try to make some movement there. And with the guy to finance, um, our auditor has, um, has made arrangements to have their preliminary engagement meeting, uh, July 30th, which is, uh, really very early. I think it's a good sign. Hopefully we'll get him in and out of here and I think, uh, given the work he's getting from Mike Rory, uh, this should be a really smooth audit. Talk.
Sure. Transfer station, we interviewed three people, uh, yesterday for the tight time position up there. There'll be more coming on that later on tonight. Uh, had a meeting this afternoon in North Berwick with, for the tri-town trash and sodium or whatever they wanna call it, uh, was, the contract comes up, as I've said before, next June, but we're trying to get ahead of it. And we've got three companies that have sent some numbers and we're working through, not a contract yet, but working through the numbers and see where we can go. Things don't look too terrible, so.
So when you do that, that's someone I like to call up where everybody carries the same price, is that, is that?
Yes, yeah, there's, I forget how many towns are involved in it, but a number of towns, like 10 or 12. And we're the subcommittee, I'm on the subcommittee to work through the numbers and meet with the three companies. And they have sent the prices and once we get it, we've got it narrowed down to two companies, 'cause the third one is not, the terms weren't acceptable. They couldn't handle the trash, the, the number of, the tonnage, so, uh, so the two that are left, we gotta do a little fine tune and then we'll kind of work on them to see how the numbers come out. So it's, uh, it's not a bad thing, so it's interesting, that's for sure. Trash is a problem.
Oh, yeah.
In the state of Maine, in the whole Northeast. So, uh, learned today that there's a lot of trash coming out of Arusta County that ends up down this way, because they have no place up there.
When you say they used to haul all the way to Norwich Walk?
Exactly, that's where some of it's going. Some of it's coming from Arusta County to Norwich Walk and Arusta County even further south, so, yeah.
So, and, and when you say it comes down here, where does it go?
Uh, some of it goes into the Portland area, some of it goes into, I can't remember the name of the.
Turnkey.
The, no, not Turnkey, it doesn't get into New Hampshire. But, uh, what's the name of the other place, Rob, and maybe you don't know?
It's fine, I just.
Yeah, I can't remember that, but they're working, the, the one that it does come down to and the one that we're talking about, uh, they're working on expanding their permit, uh, that hopefully the state will allow it to be expanded. They almost, I won't say they have to, they don't have to do anything, but they really should and they've been encouraged to expand the permit, so they'll stay open for another, you know, 10, 15 years, so, yeah, it's an interesting, interesting thing. The only other thing, so that, yes, that takes here the transfer station, there's nothing new in animal control. Uh, Mary Grant's having their picnic this weekend, Saturday. Um, everybody's encouraged to go or?
What time is that again?
It's, I think it's 10 to 2, 11 to 2. 11 to 2. Uh, there's gonna be a pie eating contest, I think Dan is here to.
It should be on the website, right?
Yes, it is on the website. Yeah, I think Dan's one of the judges, is that correct? That's what I've been told.
They have not been confirmed with me.
Oh, my!
I was last year.
Okay.
Volunteered by.
Yeah.
Club Blueberry Pie is going on.
Yeah, so they get some live music and put a lot of good stuff going on, so that's all I have.
Okay.
Um, so I had a meeting with, um, Chief Hamm on Monday, I think a very productive meeting, voiced some concerns about what the department has, things that we did get opportunity to talk to, but, but I won't be bringing up to the select board in the future. Um, the Recreation Committee, I've had some discussions with members who are not continuing their involvement in the community in the future, it's kind of like Amy's that, we as a select board, what we can do to continue to support the committee and for the future of the recreation. I also interviewed a member who's interested in joining the committee, um, which I believe we'll be voting on their appointments later on in the evening. For the Conservation and Forest Committee, I also interviewed another interested party member, um, this afternoon, you know, who will also be voting on their recommendation on the meeting.
Charlie? Um, well, right now, nothing on the schools, they won't be really meeting until September. Um, I attended the planning board meeting last Thursday, they were talking about a couple of new projects we have, that they're gonna do some site walks on. The Cemetery Committee met on Sunday down Busch Pond Road. There was a cemetery down there that, nobody was quite sure if it really was a cemetery, but they found some evidence that, uh, points to it being a cemetery, so there was a cleanup. And, uh, there was a couple of volunteers along with the Cemetery Committee and we spent a few hours out there and. Where was that? Just a little bit before Nathan Road on the right-hand side, if you're heading towards.
They did that work a year or so ago, right? Or is this an additional site?
This is an additional site. This is, this is a site that they weren't quite sure was a cemetery, but there's plenty of granite in there, someone's put a lot of work into it, there's no, no headstones, so.
The rock carries, like rock carrier and all that.
It's pretty old. Um, there are, there were a couple of signs that probably was a cemetery, you know, the raised beds for the granite, the pillars around it, so, so they put a lot of effort into it, but you couldn't see it hardly from the road and it's only from here to the refrigerator off the road. So we spent three to four hours out there on Sunday, uh, picking it up, cleaning it up, and it looked pretty nice down. That's it, that's all we got. Roads, uh, you know, road committee a couple weeks ago, I mean, we haven't had any sense.
I wanted to tell you too, David, Jay, sorry, but Jay Ward called on something else today and he complimented him, well, he thought the meeting went and appreciated you being there and thought it was a good meeting.
Yeah, I thought it was a good meeting too. I think it was productive, nice, uh, municipal ground, I guess we just went over what we're gonna possibly do all front here. Obviously no decision made, just trying to get some prices. Uh, haven't heard anything back yet, uh, the.
Yeah, Mike PVS spoke to him again today and he'll have something to you inviting by the end of the week.
Okay, beautiful. Okay, um, so I guess we're gonna move on to department head, community chair updates. I'm gonna do Robin down below somewhere.
Yeah, if he wants to.
There's this transfer station.
Yeah, this, okay, I guess we'll do it there anyways, even though it says open position, it's on the other side, okay?
Hold on, B.
What's that?
B.
Big transfer station. It's 10, it's. Oh, you're right, you're right, sorry. Okay, uh, old business none, new business, Iron Tails liquor license renewal? I think I have to set, I'm looking for some glasses.
One more mine? I got new point, new lenses.
Is this for Iron Tails?
Yes, sir.
Okay, make a motion to approve a liquor license, uh, for Iron Tails. Effective today? Today? Second.
All in favor? It's been a better year this year without all the rain, right?
Yeah, the heat, the heat was painful though. I did better when it was raining. That heat puts everybody, uh, good thing I have to offer, they don't, they're not interested in. They're just sitting at home staying cool. Thank you, folks. Have a nice evening.
Thank you, Greg. Okay, now we're at transfer station. Put the wall up over.
Alright, I'm gonna start off with, I've had a person approach me about people they think is hauling brush into our facility that is not coming from their property. I don't know how you guys want it. And I, I can't prove it if it's not, is, I'm just letting you know that somebody came to me and said, I think this person, I'm not gonna mention any names, is hauling that he's getting paid for. That's.
Is this a commercial, is it Joe Holor or is it a company?
Uh, they did not say.
But they gave you a name?
Huh?
But they gave you a name?
No.
Oh, they just said something?
They just said, they, they didn't wanna get in the middle and I don't wanna be in the middle. And I just said, I would bring it up and.
How you follow up on someone?
I, 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 I don't know, but I just, I'm just bringing the information that was brought to me to you.
Is this, is this, is this an active resident?
Yes.
So he's got a person, right?
Right.
And so, I suppose that can be true with trash that happened in too, could be from some.
I'm just making, I, I don't know how you go about, I'm just, it was wrong to my attention.
The only, I think the only way we'd be able to ever do anything with that is someone actually followed them from one site and they had made a written complaint, because we really can't go by hearsay and all that.
Right, I, I just thought, I just told him I would bring it to your attention and.
Is there any limit on the amount an individual can bring in, so the?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Not that I'm aware of.
Yeah, I mean, we definitely don't want to say, treat, uh, using it as an off order, you know?
Right.
You probably would know it if it was.
Yeah.
Yeah, they'd come in with a truck, they would kind of mark on it and.
So I guess, uh, if, if somebody's got a complaint, you know, just, I would say that, like we do with the codes.
Yeah, you gotta put it right.
Uh, put it right and send it to us, or, or we can't do anything.
I, I, and that's kind of what I told him, but I said I would bring it to you people to, to get the final word, I wasn't gonna step into nothing and.
Yeah, we obviously don't want people bringing this stuff from other towns, you know, especially the trash.
Right.
Which is probably not gonna affect us as much as the trash, but anyway.
Well, I, I think if we felt there was a real problem, maybe, I'm not saying do this now, put a sign there that says for active residents.
Yeah.
I'm not sure how to word it, but something that would, you know, make that clear as for active resident property owner.
They pretty much know that anyways, but it'd be good to have that there.
Yeah, just as a, you know, with some threatening language in there to.
Yeah, I'd like to follow up with the conversation with you, get the, all the details and where it came from off camera and I'll follow up with that.
Okay. Let's see where, see where it goes. Alright, then on that same topic, I need, we need to go out to bid on that process final because I'm right up to the sandshoe now.
Time to chip.
Yes, so we need to.
Very much.
Get that.
Do you have a list of people to call, uh, to send?
I only have Simpsons, so I understand, I don't do it anymore. And the only person that I know of is the person we had for the last two years, if I'm just, yeah. That's the only one I know of, but you know.
Environment?
Environment, you're correct. I don't know of anybody else that does that.
I think, I think York Woods, Will Woods does.
Yeah.
We can find a few, and it's just even advertising and making the attempts, Cheryl told me about planning some companies.
How much is that generally costing us?
Well, last year, last year was 95, the year before was 7.
7,000?
Yeah.
Okay.
Last year was 95 and we had more this year than we ever had.
Well, that's because we're not hauling other towns, should it all?
Well, that too, plus we had that storm in April, it was.
How did we determine how that, that, we're gonna pay that all out of his budget or is that?
Well, are we combining with the roof commissioner again?
Well, I have not spoke to him on that yet, but he had mentioned it to.
He has stuff to check as well?
I think we talked about when we combined that, 'cause it really wasn't fair for the transfer station to take the part of that in.
Right, and he had mentioned that, he mentioned that last year to me and.
Last time we had them, they looked at both piles and that's how it was separated.
Well, it used to be, like when Scott and I used to do it, we had our pile down there, there was a pile up there and we recorded Simpson thinks what it did then.
Right.
I know he is, and, uh, you know, it used to be 35, I got 35, yeah.
Does he have a line item budget for that, the road agent?
I believe so. Oh, no, no, there's no line item for that.
Well, we've combined it.
Because that, the building maintenance, I think is what they take it out of.
So, I mean, we can make it in the bid to say, you know, give us a quote on each pile and no difference.
It's all about.
Only one pile.
I thought we were talking about possibly including Will's pile.
This pile is part of that pile.
Oh, it's already been brought up there?
No, they've been hauled up all time.
Right, and the reason, and the reason why that is, is it costs $1,500 to set up down there and tear down, and $1,500 to tear up and stay it down there, so we, I believe you people who said was combine it and we only have one setup fee.
Well, I, yeah, that may be the reason why I want, that may be the reason why I want to do, I, I, because it wasn't a road down there.
Well, that, plus that too.
And it just made sense to have one guy do it and get it done with.
Yeah, I, I would think for next year's budget, uh, we figure out how much it is in the road agent budget, take it out of there, put it in the transfer station, we have it in one line and you're then responsible for.
It'll be different because I, unless, this year was a high year because of the April storm, so, you know.
So this year we average it out and this is the year you average it out, because this is gonna be your high.
Right, yeah, this is gonna be the high year.
Whatever it is now, next year you would figure 10% above that.
Okay, 'cause whatever allocation you make, it's purely arbitrary anyway.
Right.
Let's just get it in one line and be done with it, okay?
That's, that's fine with me.
So you'll come in over the next couple of days and we'll create a bid together?
Uh, he's, he's already, he's given me the, uh.
No, Tom, he's talking about.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, you're jumping ahead, he's talking about the chipping.
Yeah, sorry about that, for the chipping.
Yeah.
Can I go to this half?
I'll cut it anyway.
Okay, thank you, Robin. So, I've been a long day, dude. So, uh, Robin has come down with, uh, some, uh, specs. I'd like to shrink this down a little bit.
Yes.
Uh, what he's done is he's taken specs from one brand, put it all in here, each brand will be different, but close, I don't wanna make it feel like they can't bid on it.
That's right.
So, uh.
Like horsepower, lift capacity?
Horsepower's gonna range a little bit anyway, but weight, width, height and lift and capacity, and they're gonna give us the, you know, what we need, so.
I.
Warrant.
And warranties and all that, they'll obviously throw all that stuff in there. And we did say something about, uh, having these same companies give us a price on a, a lease purchase, uh, not lease purchase, but.
Use, use that now.
Lease return or something like that, uh, see if it's whether or not something we wanna do, if there's something we can still have warranties and us that.
And what happens with the old one? Um, because we did talk to John here today and it's coming tomorrow.
389, correct.
So, what Sanford?
The old one is coming back to us.
Is it all back together?
It is back together.
Okay, is it movable, where do we leave?
I don't know, we'll find out.
So what most towns are doing now, to get away from this bid process, um, because we don't need him, every time someone shows up, I have to show them it, what they do, um, Sanford, I bought things off municipal bid. It's, it's a site that you go on.
Yeah, I've seen it.
Municipalities, when they're selling stuff off, they advertise it, you buy it out there, it's an online auction.
Yeah.
And honestly, uh, I think that'd be the way to go if we can look into doing that, instead of us advertising it. People, people like myself who are scrolling through, they're looking for something, you're gonna get a lot more hits on that than putting.
Yeah, if we advertise.
Municipal bid, right, is that what it is?
Municipal bid.
Yeah, and I own a pen, so I'm taking notes. You don't know what I'm doing, I'm like.
Yeah, if we bid it, we're gonna get 3400 or something. Yes, if we bid it, it, we're gonna get a narrow view.
You're just gonna.
Municipal bid is like country.
All over New Orleans and stuff.
Yeah.
So I think that, I think from now on, we have something like that, that's what it's there for, that's why everybody else uses it. So if we can look into that, wanna look into that, Judge?
Doing that as you speak.
Awesome.
And the only thing I have now is I took in a load of, uh, electric motors today, uh, got $1,052. And yesterday I took two loads to crush cans and cat food cans to Berwick and got $420, just to keep you guys.
Nice.
In, in tune with what's going on up there. My next load is, is aluminum, I got probably two trailer loads of aluminum sitting up there now, is gonna go in.
Nice, nice. Uh, where, that we just dumped in, where do we put that?
There's a, there's a revenue account, is it?
Yeah, yeah. Okay, cool, appreciate it.
Didn't you have something, wasn't there something else?
Deployed, but just later on?
No, what happened to the Goody Shaff and the?
Well, I, I, that's, I'm, I'm kinda put that on the back for my personal.
You could've told me these things, okay?
Well, it wasn't.
Okay, got it.
It was just between me and Ed and I just kinda pick at his.
Okay.
Brain for you.
I'm sorry, I was putting him under update, I understood that he wanted to.
Right, no, I just, I think we're, I'm.
Yep.
Nothing we should know about?
Maybe the way it is, huh?
Nothing we should know about? Not the witch in Nova?
No, no, not right now.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you, Robin.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Where are we here?
Appointments.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to appoint, uh, Catherine Johnson to the Rec Committee, for a period ending six thirty, two thousand twenty-five.
Second.
All a favor?
I'd like to make an appointment, uh, make a motion to appoint Wayne Burgett to Forest Conservation Committee, uh, for a term ending six thirty, two thousand twenty-five.
Second. All a favor?
The municipal looks pretty neat, David.
What's that?
Municipal looks pretty neat.
Yeah, I told my wife it's still out there. I don't think it's your wife you have to worry about. Actually, she's the one that told me about it, I don't know what she said, you know? She has to tell me about it, I have to worry about it.
Well, congratulations to both these members, thanks for stepping forward and volunteering to do this work.
Exactly.
Very important.
Yeah, we appreciate it. Okay, we're gonna, executive session, do I hear a motion?
I move that we fill in the executive session, M R S A four, five, six, A personnel